I'd like to bring this public hearing to order. I'm I'll read the part of the notice of the public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Watertown Town Council will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 7, 2021 at 6:30 PM at the Watertown Town Hall, 61 Echo Lake Road, Watertown, Connecticut, to hear public comment regarding the proposed ordinance. A new ordinance regarding the filling of vacancies on the Board of Education and possibly the Town Council at an election. Current statutes limit the number of candidates that any party may nominate and the number that any person may vote for. General Statute Section 9-204B permits the town to modify that rule by ordinance. And Paul, would you like to give us a summary of why we're doing this and what's changing?
Thanks, Chair. Press a little on the face.
Now I'm good. Oh, yeah. So this is an issue that came up about a month and a half ago. The town clerk gave me a call and said that she had been contacted by the Secretary of the State's Office. For each of the Board of Education and the Town Council, we currently have two vacancies that need to be filled. As you're probably aware, if a vacancy occurs within the first two years of a term, the vacancy gets filled until the next regular election. So we have four vacancies, two on the board, two on the Town Council, that were filled to be filled now by special by election in November of 2021. By statute, Board of Education four-year terms is restricted voting, which means if there are two vacancies, each party can nominate and each elector can vote for one. And if there are three or more, each party can nominate and each voter can elect for a simple majority of the vacancies that are open. Because on the our charter provides that our four-year terms for the Town Council are also restricted voting. So in other words, each party can only nominate and each elector can only vote for three Town Councilmen for a four-year term. The Secretary of the State's Office interprets our vacancy provisions as also being restrictive voting. The general statutes in the Board of Education arena provide a simple remedy to this. General Statutes 9-204B provides that the Town Council or whatever the the proper board is in the town can pass an ordinance declaring that the vacancies will be filled by unrestricted voting, which means in our case that each party can nominate and each party can each elector can vote for as many vacancies as there are existing. She also indicated from the Secretary of State's Office that we could do the same thing by ordinance for the Town Council side because it's not clear in the charter whether it's restricted or unrestricted voting for vacancies. You might ask, what's the difference? Well, in this election year, 2021, on the Town Council side, there is one person who is not a Republican, and I think she was cross endorsed by the Democrats and the the independents, if I'm not mistaken. If we have restricted voting, everybody else on the on the Democrat side is up for election. Mr. Desmurey is a is a vacancy. Mr. DeSina is a vacancy. And then we have Mr. Debona, Kenny DeMerson, Robert Tallick. I mean, we only have two Republicans on the council that are staying, Jonathan Ramsey and Mary Ann Rosa. So if you do the numbers, the Democrats and/or the independents can only get five people elected at best because they can only nominate and and each elector can only vote for one of the two vacancies. If they could nominate and vote for two of the vacancies, then they could get potentially get six, which is the maximum under the Minority of Representation statute. On the Board of Education side, it's the exact same story, except it's reversed. The Republicans can only get five and the Democrats and/or the independents can get six. So this clarifies it. It eliminates any issue. It's we're not the only town to have done it. I I copied our ordinance off of another town who has not that long ago done it. And it just gives everybody a chance to vote for all the positions.
I'll start with the public. Are there any questions or comments from the public? I'm sorry? Yeah. Sorry. And you gotta press one of those buttons on there. The face with the little.
Press the face with the little. Oh, there you go.
That one there. Thank you.
Phil Michael, 95 Woodbine Avenue. The the question is, can the independent party nominate five people or six people?
Only five.
Only five. And the electors can pick?
Five.
Five. Thank you.
Richard Wick, Northfield Road. I think it's a good idea. We should do it.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Any questions or comments from the Town Council? Jeff?
Mr. Chessel, thank you for coming today. A couple of quick questions regarding first regarding minority representation. Obviously, the Democrats and independents are in the minority position currently on the Town Council. We do know that those are never always a permanent situation. We could be in a scenario where the Republicans or some of the parties in the minority representation. Firstly, I just wanted to make sure based on these changes that minority representation was maintained, that that's part of the maintenance of what this ordinance will cover because it's not stated expressly in here that it revolves maintaining minority representation. And I know what you had just said a few moments ago about the reason rationale behind it. But I I wanted to be clear that minority representation would not be altered by this ordinance change.
And and the way that that's taken care of is that obviously, in the case of the Town Council, there can only be six Republicans. If, for example, the Republicans nominated to fill both vacancies and the three positions that are currently available with the two positions they already have, if they won all of those, they would have seven.
Right, yes.
So what would happen is that the two vacancies get filled first and then what the lowest vote getter among the four-year terms would not get elected.
Okay. So it would be two separate, two separate lines on the ballot, I would imagine, is how this would more or less be set up. That might be more of a question for setting.
It is. The the four-year terms are going to be vote for three and then the vacancies would be vote for two.
Right, okay. And so and then and obviously, for the two-year to the the two-year terms coming up, that's the completion would be the completion of the four-year term from two years ago. So those candidates would be up for election in the next election cycle and the other seats would be up after their four-year cycle.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Someone else from the council? Not seeing anyone else like to close this public hearing? Town meeting to order. I'm going to read the warning and notice. The legal voters of Town of Watertown and those entitled to vote in town meetings are hereby warned and notified of the special town meeting to be held on Monday, June 7, 2021 at 6:45 PM at Watertown Town Hall, 61 Echo Lake Road, Watertown, to consider an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $220,500 for police special duty services. Funds are offset by the revenue from vendors to which services are supplied. Funds to be reimbursed, the police special duty non-town account and the special duty town account. Is there a motion or sorry, is there a nomination for town meeting moderator?
I nominate Jonathan Ramsey.
Any other nominations? All in favor of myself being the town meeting moderator? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion for a town meeting clerk?
I nominate Susan King.
Any other nominations?
I second for Sue King.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Sue King. I guess now it's supposed to read the call in the meeting, but I already did. So let's skip over that. Um, Chief, would you like to say a few words explaining why we're doing the transfer?
Am I on? Perfect. Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair and council members. This appropriation is a a routine appropriation that has to get done about a couple of times a year for our special duty officers who are hired private duty to work for utility companies, road work or any traffic control are paid for out of this fund and then reimbursed as the town bills the vendor. And that fund needs to be replenished every so often and and will then be reimbursed as the town bills the vendors. Any questions on that? I could certainly answer them.
Anyone on the Town Council? Any questions? Anyone from the public have any questions, comments? There's no other discussion?
I'll I'll make a motion. I move to authorize an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $220,500 for police special duty service. Funds are offset by the revenue from vendors to which services are supplied. Funds to be reimbursed, the special, the police special duty non-town account and the special duty town account.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Extinctions? Motion passed. Meeting is adjourned.
Chief, okay, chief, thank you. How are you?
I'm very well.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The public which stands one nation under God, in the thistle for their justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Marion Rosen, Jonathan Ramsey.
Here.
Ken Demarest.
Here.
Robert De Sina.
Here.
Jeffrey Desmaris.
Here.
Anthony De Fana.
Here.
Louis Fraser, Robert Britalik.
Here.
And Rachel Ryan.
Thank you. Public comment, if there's anyone that wish to speak for the public, please come forward, you say your name and address. And you'll have to press the button with the face to turn the red light on for the mic to work.
My name is Pam Clyer. My address is 100 Joshua Town Road in Watertown. My counterpart, Sue Cristelini, has done a lot of research on noise ordinances. And she's handing out a noise ordinance that was adopted by the state of, or the town of Prospect. And we thought it might be helpful because we know that you're moving forward with a noise ordinance for Watertown. And this particular noise ordinance meets the standard set forth by the state of Connecticut. And it was also approved by DEEP. So we wanted to share that with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No one else?
Richard Wick, Northfield Road. First, I'd like to thank you for getting back to normal. It's nice to do this in person. And I'm glad to hear that you decided that all the committees and commissions will do the same thing. And I hope that applies to everybody coming up. So thank you for that. I'd like to follow up on the comment pertaining to the noise ordinance. I know that the project was bounced back to the council from the ordinance subcommittee with the idea of asking the council to hold a public hearing. So my question is, do you have any idea when that public hearing will be held?
I do not know at the moment.
Pardon me?
I do not know at the moment.
Not yet, okay. The second question is, is it, can we, can we expect that your proposed draft of the new ordinance, which we assume will be, will be different from the one that Pam handed out, but at least the intent there was that that's a template, an easy place to start where you don't have to reinvent the wheel. But is it, is it reasonable to expect that your draft will be available to the public a certain amount of time before the public hearing so we can at least read it and study it and digest it and what have you?
Yes, who will.
Reasonable amount of time beforehand. Okay, but there's no, there's no present plan for a date.
There's no date set, no.
Can you take a guess?
I would have to talk to Marion.
After, after 4th of July, before Labor Day?
Somewhere in that range.
Something like that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. No one else?
Elmickel 95, Woodbine Avenue. This is kind of nice. Certainly glad to be back here. I've got a few things. One of the items on the agenda was year-end transfers. And usually that's part of the packet, but it didn't seem to be put in the pack. I'm assuming it will be put in the minutes of this meeting, year-end transfers.
We're not doing year-end transfers tonight.
Please send a couple other line items, but not.
There's a transfer request, but it's not for year-end closeout.
Oh, good, then I didn't miss anything. When is that? That's usually done this month anyway, isn't it?
In next meeting?
I have to wait till July 1st, after the year closes. Yep, so on or around one of the meetings in July.
Thank you very much. Now, there is an item, I believe, on the, on the agenda about fixing the bathroom at Veterans Park. I'm going to refrain from making any terrible comments about that. But just as, my understanding, the charter says in 30603, "The public works is responsible for all structures in town except the school boards and park and rec." Okay, 304 goes on to say, item D, "The maintenance of parks, recs, property real and personal under the jurisdictions of the park and rec commission." So the park and rec is responsible for, the stuff that the park and rec is responsible for, the maintenance of. The agenda item D tonight says we want to transfer the money needed to fix the bathrooms. Bathroom's already been fixed, thank goodness. Okay, so the money has to come from this budget year. So they need to transfer some money in there that they didn't anticipate because it was really a fairly messy job. But it says transfer to the public buildings line item. The park and rec has a line item for fixing the bathrooms. I don't understand why it's going to the public buildings. But that caused me another question. Who's responsible in the org chart for the public buildings? Is there a director of public buildings? Is it the park and rec? Who manages that part of the budget? So my suggestion tonight as a comment, I would suggest you modify, if you do have a motion, that you move it to the park and rec line item for bathroom repair. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Catherine Camroth, 31 Cottage Place in Oakville. First, I want to ask the council to consider a personal accommodation for me in how the town and I communicate. You all know that a history has developed between me and the town manager, which has made me feel targeted, threatened, and harassed. Is my intent to remain active in town subjects of interest to me, and I'm currently involved in the application before planning and zoning for the Sealy property. I would appreciate the accommodation, though when any communications are sent to me by the town, that they be from anyone other than the town manager. I would appreciate a response to this request by mail or email as soon as possible. Thank you. Now I have a few comments about that application before planning and zoning regarding the Sealy property. The applicant stated last week that they will not purchase the property unless drive-through is allowed. They were adamant that unless drive-through is allowed, they won't purchase that property. And I know that the residents in that area are also adamant that they do not want a drive-through. But they would be happy to have the new police department located on that property. So why can't the town approach Sealy to start a conversation about possibly purchasing the property for the police department? The town is selling two properties now and would then sell 195 French Street, so buying a property for the police department is not unreasonable. 195 French Street would be available for business development with no remediation. And I think you can all picture the police department sitting up on that hill where the Sealy property is and possibly the expansion of the Green and the Memorial area. It's really a perfect location. And as for the public hearings on that application, there have been issues with the virtual meetings with people not being allowed to speak despite indicating they wanted to. Don't know on what side of the screen the problem was, but there has been a problem. And also there are letters that are being asked to be read into the record, and they're not being read into the record. The continued public hearing has been made virtual with the chairman citing COVID issues. But all other meetings now are being held live, such as this one right here tonight. So how is it that COVID is the only, is only a concern of planning and zoning? It's leaving, it's leaving the appearance of a very disingenuous statement when all the other meetings are open. And lastly, I want to make the council aware that there is a significant threat of a potential lawsuit over that application. Members of Planning and Zoning Commission have been engaged in ex parte communications and/or indicated predetermination on that application. But as of yet, they have not recused themselves from participating in the hearing. So it looks like they will plan to vote on the project. Any appeal will tie that matter up in court for a few years and quash any possible scenario for that property. Thank you.
Anyone else?
To the chair, if I may. I don't know if you've noticed, but we've been hearing a lot of sirens around town lately. And if you listen in scanner land out there, the fire department is doing a phenomenal job in this town. The other day, they responded to, I believe, 11 or 12 medical emergencies within our community. And as of 7 o'clock tonight, they're on their 11th call. So for volunteer agency, I just want to commend them for doing a great job. Thank you.
Move on to approval of the meeting minutes. I move to approve the minutes of the special meeting of Thursday, May 27th, 2021. The minutes of the regular meeting of month. So you're a second? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Stunions? Motion passes? I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of Monday, May 17th, 2021. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion changes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Stunions? Motion passes? Marion was not able to be here, but we do have two correspondents that came in, both related to the register of voters. I'll read them briefly. From Depper Hughes, "After much consideration, I have made the decision to resign as register of voters effective July 30th, 2021. I have notified the Democrat Town Committee Chairman in order to give the committee adequate time to find my replacement. It has been my privilege to serve as register voter since 2014, as well as serving as deputy register from 2004 to 2014. I'll be available for any assistance that may be needed during this transition in order to facilitate the seamless passing of my responsibilities to my successor. I would be glad to help however I can. If you should have any questions, best way to reach me, give her phone number, and thank you for your time. You also received a very similar letter from Bob Porter as well, also with a resignation dated for July 30th, 2021." Tom Andrews report?
Good evening, Vice Chair and council members. Over the past month, we've had a BLYT task force meeting in which we have talked about organizing and prioritizing our response to town BLYT issues. We currently have 20 to 30 open cases and are working on compliance. In addition, the task force has discussed documenting the procedures of BLYT investigations. We have recently learned that the Municity software that was put in place for the building department and land use will give us a better platform to track and document our response to BLYT. Using Municity allows all members of the task force to review and comment on each property. Once we have written our process for responding to this complaint, or these types of complaints, the task force will review statutes and ordinances to ensure that we have the tools needed for enforcement. We are also in our, in our town ordinances review process to ensure that we follow state statutes and are referencing regulations correctly in those ordinances. As far as our new software, I'm sorry, our new website, the site map and transfer information for our new website have commenced. So we anticipate the week of the 14th to have the system available for review and testing by staff. We expect a July 1st launch date. Planning and zoning, our Municity software is in place and is being utilized for in-person permitting. They're still working on getting the virtual permitting process up and running. There's an issue with credit card acceptance, so they are working on that. We're currently reorganizing the zoning regulations to produce a more user-friendly application for the people or persons that would need that type of service. Water and Sewer is flushing out our lines throughout our town. And I want to take and thank Park and Recreation Director Lisa Carew for the seamless job that she's done and her staff for the, with Memorial Day Parade. Crestbrook Swimming Pool has been drained, acid washed, and painted in preparation for summer activities. Crestbrook Tennis Courts were power washed today and rehab of courts will commence this week. Our first outdoor concert of the year scheduled for the end of June at Veterans Park, and we anticipate the return of the Fall Festival this year. We have onboarded our new senior center coordinator. I would like to welcome Laura Gurey. She's not here this evening, but she anticipates a soft opening of the senior center on June 15th and a full opening celebration on June 30th, which will include food and music. Our highway department has been very active over the last month or so, getting us ready for the summer. They're out there doing our streets sweeping and roadside mowing for the past month or so. They're also working on catch basin repairs and reconstruction in preparation for this year's road paving projects. As they begin to finish up on the road sweeping, they will concentrate on street and crosswalk line painting. I want to thank the highway staff for supporting the Memorial Day Parade and presenting their new Factor truck, which has been in use for about a year. We have also interviewed for laborers position. We conducted 10 interviews, and they're in the process of selecting to replace the transfers that went to Water and Sewer, so we have two open positions in the labors. Town clerk advised me that this is dog licensing month, so June is our annual resident dog contest and the pet food drive for the month. Mrs. Dalton also noted that marriage licenses are up, so. I don't know. I'd like to thank Chief Bromley, I have a lot of thanks tonight, and all this personnel for the outstanding presentation at the Memorial Day Parade, all the firemen marching and the apparatus presented. Were, they were very impressive. Very happy to see that. Our fire marshal office has been very busy the past couple of months with fire prevention training and multifamily annual inspections. In addition, Fire Marshal Calabrese has had a program in place, which I was not aware of, trip and fall prevention training for our seniors. With the central goal of that program in insisting seniors and living in a trip-free area and with a secondary proactive goal of reducing EMS calls, which I thought was an excellent idea. There has been some discussion for the Fire Marshal's Office and the Police Department to engage in a collaborative measure to interact with our seniors, which I think would be very important. I'd like to compliment Chief Berniger, his command staff, and the Watertown Police Honor Guard for their professionalism and outstanding showing at the parade and replay. During the Memorial Day Parade, our bicycle patrol was out interacting with our citizens in the true spirit of community policing. Our K-9 officer, Rob Fortier, and K-9 Fran will be graduating from Handler School on June 18th. Congratulations to Officer Fortier and Fran. We look forward to them attending maybe one of our next council meetings. Just a little update, if you remember, Watertown is a part of a multi-agency accident investigation team. Chief Berniger has sent Officer David Miranero to attend an advanced bicycle accident investigation team, which supports that regionalization team process. The chief has implemented some new towing regulations, so anyone wishing to be on the police department tow list must reapply to be on the rotation. And deputy chief interviews will be conducted on June 9th. As far as finance is concerned, they did not march in our parade, but they have been very busy implementing the new Tyler software. We have scheduled multiple pieces of training on many days, including all staff that will be, will be required to use the latest software. Those directly with, within the finance department have been training almost every day. I want to thank our team that has managed a normal workload while still incorporating training into their day. Tyler is currently working on important data, and we anticipate a July 1st, 2021 collective date at which time the software will be. collective date at which time the software will be commissioned to the town of Watertown. That is my report for the month. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Raymond, a quick question regarding the, you sent out a correspondence, I believe it was last week or the week before, I don't remember, regarding public hearings, in-person public hearings. We heard tonight about concerns about the P and Z. I've heard concerns outside of that before tonight's meeting too. So I understand, is this something that is at the discretion of the chair of that particular commissioner committee as to whether the meeting is held publicly, virtually or in person? And being that this particular one, this particular issue is regarding the sealy property, would it perhaps be advisable to hold this in a public setting rather than on a virtual setting? Now, that may be more of an opinion question, so if you want to abstain your opinion on that, that's okay. But as far as permissibility, they are, is this capable of being done by all the committees and commissions, number one? Number two, does, does the chair of that said committee or any of the committees or commissions for that matter have discretion on how that's held?
I will abstain on some of that comment. But when I sent out my memo, which was advising all the commissions that June seventh will be the launch date for this venue here. I was confident that we were going to be open and all our audio visual would be up and running. To be honest with you, within the last, we just got this up and running probably forty-five minutes before we started, so there's a lot of stress here this afternoon. When I was consulted about the planning and zoning meeting, I did allude to the fact that I did not know if we were going to be up and running, and I was a little nervous because I committed to this June seventh date. So I had put it in writing and DNR, who did all our installs, you know, they committed and they got it done, but up until about forty-five minutes before we started, I wasn't sure if that was going to happen. So, and it is strictly up to the chair to decide whether they would have an in-person or a virtual meeting.
Could, could the chair, and I'm not specifically necessarily referring to P and Z, this is really any commission, could they change that? So say if there was a, any other commission or P and Z for that matter was going to hold a meeting virtually and now the technology is available, could that be changed prior to the meeting that the public announcement could be made to say that the meeting would now be held in person, say here or wherever it may be?
The only thing I would suggest is that the chair has the authority to do that, but I don't know if they've already publicized that or if that's been sent out. So if it were to have been publicized, that could create confusion.
Right.
So again, it would be back up to the chair to make that decision.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
New business?
Starting this out. I move to authorize the renaming of Crestbrook Park Tennis Courts to be the name, to be Jack Staver Tennis Courts.
Is there a second? Do you have anything to add? Any discussion, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?伸伸？ Motion passes?
I move to adopt the proposed new ordinance regarding the filing of vacancies, filling the vacancies on Board of Ed and possibly the town council at an election. Current statutes limit the number of candidates that any party can nominate and the number that any person may vote for. General Statute Section nine dash two oh four B permits the town to modify that rule by ordinance. This ordinance shall be effective twenty-one days after publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, discussions?
I do have a quick question, so. So I, I just want a clarification about this. We may, if we change the ordinance, does this require any kind of approval from the state, given that it's a change on the general, ordinance alteration to the general statute? For that surprise, I just thought of this when I was looking at this.
Simply no.
Okay, so.
In fact, it, just to, to follow up, the, the state indicated that I, as the town attorney, could write an opinion letter that said that our charter permits unrestricted voting and the state would accept that. I didn't feel I could do that in the face of our charter language. Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?伸伸？ Motion passes?
I move to approve an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of eight thousand five dollars and forty-five cents to the police department's overtime line item. Funds received through grants from the FBI and Drug Enforcement Administration.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?伸伸？ Motion passes?
I move to an approve, move to approve an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of ten thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars for emergency repairs to Veteran Memorial Park Public Restrooms.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'm assuming it's going to the public buildings, because that's where the expense is.
Is, to follow on what Mr. Michael said during his public, is, is that the appropriate place for it to go or should it go to Parks Direct since it's a public park? Okay, just want to be, just want to clarify. Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?伸伸？ Motion passes?
I move to approve an adjustment from the, for department heads in non organized effective July first, twenty twenty one at two percent for the following promotion, positions. Executive Administrative Assistant, Assistant Town Manager slash Finance Director, Director of Public Works, Land Use Administrator slash Building Administrator, Director of Park and Rec, Water and Sewer Superintendent, Police Chief, Deputy Police Chief, Fire Chief, Deputy Fire Chief, Fire Marshal, Deputy Fire Marshal, Town Clerk, Economic Development Director, Registrar and Assistant Registrar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, discussion?
A quick question. So typically we see this type of percentage increase each year. Is that how it would be normally is about two percent? I know that obviously having some difficult issues budget-wise, but you know, I think these folks have done a wonderful job in our town. They're always responsive. They're always responsible for, for the jobs they do. I don't think that they should be the ones to be quote unquote punished to not get their, their annual expected increase based on the fact that there are other issues going on with the town budget. I like to think of myself, and I think we all like to think of ourselves up here as being responsible stewards for the public's money. That it doesn't always happen that the budgets end up the way we'd like them to be, but I don't think that it should be taken out on these people who dedicate their professional lives to our town and to serving people at the town. So I think it's, it's appropriate for them to receive the proper increase that they should be getting.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? 伸伸？ Motion passes?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds between line items for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one.
Is there a second? And just for the record, it's dealing with enforcement, equipment and money coming from vehicle maintenance fund. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?伸伸？ Motion passes?
I move to approve the resolution appropriating sixty thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy cents between line items.
And those line items, it's for tax refunds, that's what it's related to. And majority of that sixty thousand is related to one leasing company that is getting substantial refunds for all of that. Any additional comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? 伸伸？ Motion passes?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the tax refunds.
Second. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? 伸伸？ Motion passes?
I move to enter into executive session to discuss the same of town-owned properties. So should be sale, says same. Town-owned properties located at thirty-seven The Forest Street, formerly known as Town Hall, with the members present, the town manager, the assistant town manager, along with the town attorney, Paul Jessel.
Second. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?伸伸？ Enter executive session. I believe we're
Like to bring our meeting back to order. I'd like to make a motion to table all discussion on thirty-seven The Forest Street. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? 伸伸？ Motion passes? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make some motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.